Welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is May 4th, 2021. This meeting precedes our regular meetings scheduled at 6:45 PM. It's now 5:30. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Way. Councilmember Way, Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Here.
Mayor Paul.
Here.
Great, and the topic of our special meeting today is a capital improvement programs study session. And so I don't see our city manager here yet, but I do see our Director of Public Works. Roger, would you like to kick us off on this topic?
Here, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. I am very pleased to introduce this study session to discuss proposed capital improvement projects for next fiscal year. Presenting the study session will be Susan Michael. Susan is our new Capital Improvement Programs Manager and has been performing these duties since last October. Susan is also the city's project manager for our largest CIP, the Library Expansion Project. And we are very pleased to have Susan in these positions. Supporting Susan tonight will be myself, Director of Parks and Recreational Services Joanne McGreeney, Assistant Director Chad Mosley, and Transportation Manager David Stillman, and other Public Works staff. Additionally, Administrative Services Director Christina Alfarah and Finance Manager Zach Karch, and are available for all big picture budget questions. The purpose of this study session is to receive council and community input on proposed capital improvement projects. Inputs received will drive what capital projects are requested for funding that council considers authorizing the budget at our meeting on January, or on June 15th, pardon me. Your consensus input on any specific project is ideal. And I'll ask that you provide clear direction of what you would like to see come back as a funding request. This evening, you are not being asked to authorize any funding, only to allow us to present proposed project information and provide input. Next slide, Susan. The presentation for the CIP study session to review proposed projects is organized as you see on this slide. While there are many outstanding existing and completed projects to discuss, these will only be discussed generally so that we can focus the study session time on new projects being proposed. I will state, however, that our community is very fortunate to have this council and council priors that have created an environment where funding and implementation of capital improvement projects has been made possible and encouraged. So thank you for your vision and support. I'm also proud of the entire city team and our community that has allowed us to deliver an almost unprecedented number of capital projects, especially during the unique challenges caused by COVID. Prior to this meeting, proposed transportation projects were presented to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, and similarly, park improvement projects were presented to the Park and Recreation Commission. After receiving input this evening, the proposed list of projects will be presented to the Planning Commission for consideration of general plan performance on May 25th. Susan will begin soon, and for the presentation to be efficient, please let Susan complete her approximate 20-minute slides prior to getting into questions. This will help ensure that she covers all the material. And between us all, we are more than happy to discuss any project in more detail. And sharing these projects with you is one of the highlights of our year, and we are excited to get started. So without Susan, please begin your presentation.
Good evening, council, mayor, members of the public. We'll start with a few brief notes on the existing completed CIP projects. And I will apologize in advance, we're going to go through this rather quickly because there's a lot of information to go through. We'll be going through the presentation quickly, and we'll helpful if you can make reference to the attachments to the staff report for some additional information. Attachment A is a list of proposed projects and a brief description and the funding request. This is meant to be an easy reference to have at hand. Attachment B is a packet with a single-page narratives on each of the new projects proposed. It repeats the information in Attachment A that has more detail. Attachment C is a CIP projects table that will be included in the budget documentation from my finance team. This lists the new projects as well as existing completed projects. There are five categories indicated. It's important to note that these categories do not delineate priorities. So Category 1 are the new projects. Category 2 are the multi-year funded projects. Category 3 are the existing funded projects. Category 4 are the existing projects with external funding. And Category 5 are the completed projects. So the CIP dashboard has more detail on the CIP projects and is updated monthly. If you go to the Cupertino web site and navigate to Public Works, then CIP, there you'll see links to get you to navigate to the interactive dashboard. We encourage everyone to reference this site for updates on all CIP projects. Currently, we have 40 CIP projects underway. This is in Attachment C, the table, the CIP table. This list includes Categories 2, 3, and 4, which are the multi-year funded projects, the existing projects, and existing projects with external funding. So far, this includes 11 parks and rec projects, five trails projects, nine bicycle and pedestrian projects, 10 streets projects, and five facilities projects. Just to give you a sense of what we're working on, we're going to show three current projects very quickly. The library project, the library expansion project is underway. Demolition happened last month, and they will start construction in May. It's going very well. The design-build team is doing a great job. And you know that there's a live stream video from the library webpage as well. You can always go and see what's happening. The all-inclusive playground, due in part to COVID and challenges in being successful with fundraising, staff worked with the county to reduce the scale and budget of the project to land on a project that remains fully inclusive at a lower cost. The County Board of Supervisors approved the revised funding officially last week. We are currently working on the required fundraising and will begin the designing process soon after. And the Bub Road Separated Bike Way. This project ranked well in the 2016 Bicycle Plan as one of several Apple-funded projects. Work includes pedestrian walkway features and a separated bike way. Construction recently started and will continue for the next three months. So of the completed projects, we have 10 completed projects. We've completed 10 projects in spite of pandemic conditions. Five parks projects, parks and rec projects, three bicycle and pedestrian projects, one trail project, and one streets project. So similar to the existing project, we thought we'd illustrate a few of the completed projects. The land for the Lawrence Mitty Park was acquired and annexation is underway. The remainder of the funds for Lawrence Mitty will first be directed towards programming, community outreach, and input studies, and overall conceptual design. This work will begin as soon as the annexation is completed. McLellan Road Separated Bike Corridor Phase 2. Phase 1 and 2 of this project are complete. Award of the Design Contract for Phase 3 will happen soon. Construction is anticipated for the summer of 2022. Linda Vista Trail Construction began in the spring of this year and is finishing up later this month. The opening will be scheduled very soon. So we wanted to give you some background information on other projects before we launch into the new projects. In previous years, four multi-year projects have been approved by council, and we are maintaining the funding of these projects and the program for this year and presumably future years as planned. ADA improvements, the annual playground replacement. We're working on playgrounds at Creekside and Varian for this. Park amenity improvements. Public Works works with Parks and Rec to determine the highest priorities at the parks, like hydration stations, trash receptacles, et cetera, and the street light infill installations. So last year, as part of the CIP initiative, four projects were deferred. We'd like to update you on the status of those four projects. The all-inclusive playground, as I mentioned, is active. Orange and Burn Avenue Sidewalk Improvements is active. Burn Avenue is complete. Orange Avenue will resume at the end of this calendar year. The Stevens Creek Corridor Park Chain Master Plan is on hold, pending the completion of the Blackberry Farms Golf Course Alternates Analysis. Council received a presentation from Parks and Recreation soon on that. And the Bike Boulevard's improvement, Phases 1 through 3, the permanent improvements are on hold. But council approved moving forward with interim measures to address some of the greatest needs areas, and that work is continuing. And for this fiscal year 2122, we are proposing to defer to otherwise active projects. So the two projects shown active, there are two projects shown as active on the existing project list that we propose to defer beyond this fiscal year. So, lost my place.
And Susan, just now that you have a moment, the audio's a little bit in and out. So one of the things that might work is perhaps turning off the video. That might help.
I can do that.
Okay, and just, yeah, just know that it's audible, but it's kind of blippy. It goes.
Okay. I take off my headset, but I've found that to be even more problematic in the past. So the two projects that we're talking about are the interim city hall and the new city hall projects that were, are in the existing project list. We are proposing to place these two projects on hold for this year while leaving the funding in place. We are proposing that these two projects would be superseded by a new project called City Hall and Community Hall Improvements. The new project would include programming, conceptual planning, and cost estimating for a remodel of the existing city hall and an expansion of Community Hall. Once we have options and cost estimates for projects, we'll return the council for further direction. We are requesting $500,000 in funding for the upcoming fiscal year for the new City Hall and Community Hall improvements project. These funds will cover initial planning and cost estimating, but not final design and construction. Additionally, we're proposing a new project called 10455 Torrey Avenue Improvements, which would include programming, planning, and construction of the new property. We are requesting $3 million for this project, and those funds are estimated to cover all costs from inception through completion. Yeah, the existing projects were funded in fiscal year 19 to cover the design services for an interim city hall and swing, well, for the interim city hall, which was kind of a swing space, and design services for new city hall. Total of $4 million was approved for these projects. These funds were not used, and they remain in the budget as a carryover. We propose to keep these funds allocated for a future design of city hall projects, but we acknowledge the non-active status of the projects by noting them as deferred. So we wanted to note where we're coming from. So fiscal year 2021, four projects were deferred, and new projects were carefully selected. Projects that required public input were impacted, and major construction efforts were delayed or halted for some portion of the year. And yet, here we are. We're beginning to emerge from shelter in place, but many safety protocols are still in place, and we're obviously not back to normal. To be conservative in the number of new projects and the scope seems prudent. The cost of construction and the source of funding are definitely in flux and continue to develop. It seems the best idea to proceed cautiously. So how did we arrive at this list of new projects? We have a general framework that we keep in mind when evaluating and determining the list of new projects. Council priorities, health and safety improvements, which include maintenance efforts, high priorities coming out of the city's master plans or condition assessments reports, projects in response to community input and ongoing usage, projects on hold that need to be reactivated and/or are in ongoing phases of existing projects. Projects that have external funding were also under consideration, and we are also keeping in mind the capacity of current staff to accomplish these projects. As you can see from the list, projects are in many cases supported by considerable previous input from council, county, community-involved master plans, and input from commissions. You can see that each of these factors has an icon on the left here. In the new project descriptions that follow, you will see that these icons, you will see these icons repeated to indicate if those were a factor in generating that particular project for the CIP. There are 16 new projects proposed for fiscal year 2122. There are four bicycle and pedestrian projects, three facilities projects, six park and recreation projects, and three streets projects. So let's get into the actual projects. The first one is Carmen Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge Right-of-Way. As a Tier 1 priority in the 2018 Pedestrian Transportation Plan and a Tier 2 priority in the 2016 Bicycle Transportation Plan, this project has support from the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission and many members of the community. This project, if advanced to construction in a future year, will fill a gap in the bicycle pedestrian network resulting from the bissection of the neighborhood by Stevens Creek Boulevard. Only right-of-way acquisition is being requested at this time. It is anticipated that the right-of-way can be completed in the 2122 fiscal year. The aim is to acquire the property if the property owner is amenable. Fiscal year 2223 will focus on design and construction. Stelling and Aldaz Crosswalk Installation. Adjacent to the Quinlan Community Center, this project is one of the few remaining Tier 1 projects in the 2018 Cupertino Pedestrian Transportation Plan. The scoop, scoop, the scope removes pedestrian crossing conflicts with left-turning cars by potentially moving the existing crosswalk to the north and improves bicycle crossings as well. This can be completed in the 2122 fiscal year if approved. The Stevens Creek Boulevard Class 4 Bike Way Phase 2 Construction. The 2016 Bicycle Transportation Plan identifies improvements needed and priorities to enhance and promote safer bicycle transportation in the city. The number-one priority of the plan was to provide a separated Class 4 bicycle lane on Stevens Creek Boulevard. This is the second phase to address, second phase of the project to address that priority. The first phase was Wolf to Tentau and has been completed. Design for Wolf Road to State Road 85 segment begins soon. The project will be constructed in phases, with the Wolf to Dianza segment being constructed first with this requested project. Since this is a large scope of work, it is anticipated to run longer than the 2122 fiscal year. And Traffic Garden Feasibility. There are precedents for traffic gardens in other parts of the US and Europe. It's a miniature streetscape used for bicycle and pedestrian education. It's an engaging tool that is in line with the city's safe routes to school program and the city's general plan. This traffic garden concept has wide support in Cupertino's school community as well as regional interest among neighboring jurisdictions. Many are interested in partnering with Cupertino on this initiative. This feasibility study, including determining participation of neighboring cities, will be completed within the 2122 fiscal year. City Hall and Community Hall Improvements Programming Feasibility. For City Hall, this existing building does not meet current or projected needs for office space. Also, structural, mechanical, and other code-related modifications are needed to meet current building standards. At Community Hall, the use of the building could be maximized with a separate addition of a conference space and remodeled kitchen space to better facilitate group meeting functions. In this fiscal year, the project goal is to complete programming, feasibility cost studies, and conceptual design. If merited, the project is early as fiscal year 23, will be recommended to proceed with design and construction. And 10455 Torrey Avenue Improvements. As you know, we recently acquired this property on Torrey Avenue. The proposal is to define the program for an interim city hall in this location and take the project through to construction. The proximity of this property to Civic Center and its central location within the city lends itself to numerous uses, including a satellite and/or interim city hall facility. In this fiscal year, the project goal is to complete programming, conceptual design. Depending on the progress on the city hall planning and the status of the current tenants in this building, progress on design and construction is preferred. And the Electric Vehicle Parking Expansion. This project proposes to expand the city's existing Level 2 charging ports from 12 to 32 ports. In addition, we'd install five Level 3 fast-charging ports. All charging ports would be available for public use. This scope of work would upgrade the existing locations to meet industry benchmarks, and the proposals will also stay within the capacity of our existing electrical infrastructure. And Memorial Park Pond Repurposing. The existing concrete liner is in poor condition with numerous cracks that resulted in significant water loss. Due to this condition and drought restrictions, the city drained the inoperable ponds in 2013 and has not refilled them. Reconstruction of the ponds is not cost-effective, and empty ponds pose a potential safety hazard. This project would remove the ponds and prepare the site for future development as identified in the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan and the design studies completed in 2018 of Memorial Park. We've minimized the scope to improve our ability to implement the changes within the 2122 fiscal year. We've got three projects at Memorial Park, and the second one is Memorial Park Amphitheater Improvements. Improvements to the amphitheater are one of the short-term goals from Memorial Park outlined in the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan adopted by council. Scope will include shade structure for the stage, electrical and audio improvements to the infrastructure, moving the path and waterway out of the immediate stage area, and improvements to the adjacent restrooms to accommodate the assembly use. This would enhance the outdoor event space, making some much-needed functional improvements, especially important for the cultural events that happen in this space. The goal would be to complete the improvements by the end of fiscal year 23. Fiscal year 22 would focus on the programming and design. And the Memorial Park Specific Plan Design. This park was designed and built in the 1970s and is due for conceptual as well as functional upgrade. As the largest park in our municipal system, the master plan gave this a high degree of priority. The proposed project would include the development of a conceptual design for Phase 1, incorporating findings from the master plan process and building upon the considerable input gained from the community. During the master plan process and the design studies that were part of that process, we have a good deal of community input on Memorial Park design. We will build upon this to move forward with the design of Phase 1 within fiscal year 2122. Just a few more projects. Blackberry Farms Pool Improvements. For multiple years, the two pools at Blackberry Farm have displayed all the signs that are indicative of the need to replaster a pool, including mineral stains, peeling of the surface, and a rough surface area. The rough surface has been a cause of several injuries, including a work compensation claim. The replastering of the pools at Blackberry Farm was last performed in 2009. This maintenance scope, as well as the sanitary and accessibility corrections required by a 2020 permit application process, the scope are required to continue operations of these aquatic facilities beyond the 2021 aquatic season. The plan is to retain a pool consultant in the spring of this year, complete the documentation and issue for bid in the fall, and complete construction by spring 2022. The Full-Sized Outdoor Basketball Court. There is no full-size basketball court owned by the city. The Parks and Recreation System Master Plan recommends developing one or two basketball courts as a short-term goal, full-size being the priority. In a community-wide survey for the master plan, basketball was the top recreation activity requested by teen respondents and in the top 3 for respondents younger than 30. Once a location is identified, we hope to be able to complete design and construction in fiscal year 2122. And the Tree Inventory Along Stevens Creek Corridor. The tree inventory has not been done for several portions of the Stevens Creek Corridor since 1995, and other portions have never been inventoried. Some of the largest and oldest trees in the city are along Stevens Creek. The majority of the trees along the creek banks, including large numbers of very of very large native trees, have not been systematically mapped, identified, nor logged in the DIS system. This is a health and safety concern as we need to identify trees that are in danger of falling down. It is also in keeping with the number-one goal of the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan, which is protect nature, trees, and natural areas in parks and throughout the city to support wildlife, ecological functions, and a stronger connection to Cupertino's natural environment. City Lighting LED Transition Assessments. This past March, council ratified the Dark Knight Foot Handle Limitations for Private Development. The requirement, coupled with the age of our current streetlight network, has provided an ideal time to assess our 2,500-plus streetlight, trail, and outdoor facility light assets for replacement to increase energy efficiency and to comply with similar dark star requirements as required of private development. Because of varying conditions across these assets, we propose to perform an assessment of the current lighting and map out an effective strategy for implementation in the next fiscal year. Homestead Dianza Construction. This is signal improvements. This project will modify the traffic signals at this intersection. The goal of the work is to improve safety at the intersection by enhancing the visibility of the northbound and southbound signal indications. The design phase is an existing CIP project, and the design contract will be awarded soon. We previously received a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant for the design phase of this project. And the last project is the Pumpkin and Fiesta Storm Drain Project, Phases 1 and 2. The 2018 Storm Drain Master evaluated the city's storm drainage system and identified areas subject to flooding during 10-year storm. The plan also identified and prioritized projects to mitigate potential for flooding in areas of deficiency. The Pumpkin and Fiesta Phase 1 and 2 projects received the highest priority. Phase 1 will be constructed as part of this project. Phase 2 will require additional funding in the future. Storm drain developer fees can be used for this project. This is a last-minute clarification on the project. We're working with the finance team to confirm this allocation, and it will be an update in the June budget final review approval. So we might be able to cover the entire $2 million, but it's yet not confirmed yet. And the financial context. For this, I'm actually going to turn it over to Christina.
And Susan, Christina had just asked me to step in and cover. I'd be happy to cover this next slide or two.
Okay, just the ones.
Sure, so this slide before you, this is a look at the General Fund's unassigned fund balance and the projection and forecast over the next 10 years. As mentioned in the fiscal impact of the staff report, improving these CIP projects would require an additional transfer from the General Fund of approximately $3.2 million. And the funding source, again, is from the General Fund's unassigned fund balance. We're currently projecting We're currently projecting to end the current fiscal year with thirty-nine point one million dollars in unassigned fund balance. Over the next ten years, due to expenditures increasing at a faster rate or a higher rate than the city's revenues, we're anticipating having to use or burn down the unassigned fund balance to approximately twelve million dollars at the end of that ten-year period. So factoring in a, a potential three point two million dollar additional transfer from the general fund, as Susan had mentioned, that could come down if it's decided or determined that the Pumpkin Fiesta project could be covered with storm drain funds. Nevertheless, a, a three point two million dollar transfer would reduce that at twenty thirty-one projection amount for unassigned fund balance to eight point eight million dollars. The last thing we want to note, too, is that the unassigned fund balance projections do not incorporate any additional transfers to the capital reserve or funding for future C I P projects beyond fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you, Zach.
Sure.
And to summarize, sure, you're happy to hear that. So a quick funding summary. New projects total fourteen point two million. Currently, the external funding total is one point four million, so the city funding impact is twelve point eight million. The capital reserve has eleven point six million. A one point two million transfer from the general fund is needed to cover the difference. To maintain the recommended two million dollar balance in capital reserve, a three point two million dollar transfer is required, as Zach mentioned. And it's also worth noting that in order to deliver the new projects as scheduled, an additional two-year limited term position is required in C I P. And a short project summary. Sixteen new projects are proposed. Of the sixteen, twelve anticipate completion within fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Four projects will continue into twenty-two, twenty-three, and those are the Lawrence Midi Design, Memorial Park Amphitheater, one zero four five five Tory, and Stevens Creek Boulevard Phase Two Construction. The fiscal, the, this C I P program will be next presented to the Planning Commission on the twenty-fifth of May to confirm the conformance of the general plan. And we just wanted to note that we are pursuing additional funding for a number of the projects. And that is all. Thank you very much. You can turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we have a little bit more than half an hour left. I'll, I'll break before our meeting is six forty. It's approximately six oh three. So given that and the fact that we do have attendees from the public, I would like to allocate four minutes to each of our council members between questions before we go to the public and then follow-up questions as well as comments afterward. So I'll go by hands for anyone who would like to ask clarifying questions at this point. And, you know, it's up to you how you use your time, but again, I'm allocating four minutes for each council member. Councilmember Willie.
Susan, great presentation, very detailed. Almost too, in fact, too much to really be, uh, go over in much detail tonight. My two questions are somewhat inclined. The Zach said that he foresees the city reserves, as I interpret what he's saying, going from today at thirty-nine million down to only twelve million in another ten years. And I would think that that should be going the other way because things are going to be more costly. We're going to have, uh, uh, higher expenditures, and yet we would have less, less buffer to get us through should we need it. So I'm, I'm kind of concerned that sixteen new projects, ten completed projects, you know, kind of looking at it from a balance standpoint. If we're completing ten projects and then we add another ten projects, you know, kind of keeping that in balance as opposed to going from ten to sixteen and needing to draw down the general fund. So the question is, gee whiz, can we, can we really do some, some looking at this and kind of try and be a little bit more fiscal astute so that we don't wind up in ten years with those reserves being down at twelve million? I mean, so is that a question that you can answer, or that's my concern?
Oh, um, Roger, do you want to take that?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Willie. As, as we were looking at the projects and looking at our capacity to deliver them and the projects that are going to be wrapping up, you know, you have this calendar here. You know, we're, we're looking at a picture in time right now. Where, where we will be at the end of this, say, in December, you know, we'll have more than ten projects done. So we were, we're looking at how we could, you know, fully utilize our staff. This is an aggressive C I P project, you know, because it is based on, on your prior priorities and, and master plan priorities. So it, it is aggressive, you know, and we do have things that we're doing, you know, Memorial Park is very aggressive. So, you know, any input that you would have as to how you'd like to see us prioritize and potentially reduce those projects, that, that's what this evening is about. But we, we just came with you with a, an aggressive, yet, yet something that we can deliver with, with just a, a little bit more staffing and have these projects happen, mainly this year.
Maybe one simple question. I, so I, I am really focused on Memorial Park, and I see, you know, that three point five million and one million. Does that really finish all of the Mi- Memorial Park thing? I, I'm wondering that Memorial Park is big, and I want to be sure I understand how far that gets us down the road.
Right, those, the three projects at Memorial Park, you know, it's going to be removing the existing ponds in their entirety. That's, yeah, and then the, the amphitheater would be, you know, very much improved. Then there'll be a specific plan that will approve the entire site. And so that will be a future C I P project to, to implement and fund in future years for the whole park. So no, this, this does not do all of the park with these three projects.
Okay, that's your time, Councilmember Willie. I don't see any other hands up from the council at this point, so I'll go over to members of the public. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up now, so before we go, we'll go with your clarifying questions.
Okay, so I think we, it's, I, I like all the projects that's proposed. However, I would like to know what other projects have been considered before you pick this list of projects. And another thing, I think, I asked the same thing back in two thousand and nineteen, is we need a view of how much we have down the line. We, we keep starting visibility study after visibility study. And now we have Memorial Park, and that really needs to be done. But how much extra we really have, we need to be paying among all of the things, seismic for facilities, I think the service center, city hall, and the Lawrence, there are a lot of things we still. I think I asked for a complete list, list back in two thousand and nineteen, so can we get that list? So we have a full scope of what's really.
Remains.
Can we? Thank you.
And I can, I can answer some of that. We did have a list in, in twenty nineteen with our C I P of unfunded projects. It was a long, like, two-and-a-half-page list, three hundred and seventy-five million from, you know, aquatic center performing arts. It was a very robust list of things that, that could be. You know, we didn't prepare that this year because that is so much a moving target as far as, you know, our, our complete city wish list. What I will say in terms of the projects that are master plans, and if you look at our bike, our pedestrian plan, and look at the tier-one projects and what we've completed and what we're doing this year, it's very much in line with how we're working down those upper-tier projects. Same with the Storm Drain Master Plan, we're, we're hitting those top-tier projects. And I, and I, and I know through Susan's presentation, there's a lot of reference to the high priorities that were provided in the park master plan and why we're doing our proposed C I P projects for those improvements.
Let me clarify, and I don't mean the aquatic center, those are kind of project. I mean just the estimate for Memorial Park, for Traffic Garden, for Stevens Creek Separate Bike Boulevard. These are things we want to do if we start this visibility study today, right? And most likely, we want to. Then what's the estimate for completing them? I would like to have some idea.
Well, and from the specific plan that we do at Memorial Park, similar to Lawrence Midi, from, from that, we will, will, once we know what, how it should be programmed based on yours and community input, then we, a detailed cost estimate would come from that. And then we would, and that would be options that would be presented to council before we remove it.
Not detail, I want the broad ballpark estimate. Can we have the information next time? Thank you.
Okay, great. So councilmember Moore, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. And I just want to kind of add on to what the vice mayor is asking. So it's, to me, it's really about the information presentation so that, for instance, when we're looking at Carmen Road Bridge right-of-way, it shows a total budget of seventy-five thousand, but on the next page, I'm looking at Stelling and Alves crosswalk installation at eighty thousand. It, it gives the impression that the project total would be seventy-five thousand when it's actually going to be over, potentially over two million for Carmen Road. So if there would be a way that you could put a project to completion estimate, I think that would help. Otherwise, we might be led to believe, oh, this, this road bridge is very inexpensive. I mean, let's, let's, let's go with that. And then, so I, I would like to see what, what the vice mayor is asking for. Also, under, I really like this, this sixteen-page project descriptions that, that we have for each one of these new projects. I'd also like to know if you could put project work completed to date, if there, if that's been done, and it might fit under the status update. If there's any environmental review required for the project, any project constraints and limitations, and key stakeholders for each project. So like for Carmen Road Bridge, you, you would have a, a list there. And if there's, if there is any other information that you can think of that could, you know, help us come up with whether or not to push one of these projects through or, or not. And I think you already do have the funding sources on most of these, but if there, if that could be broken out so that we know that there might be some external funding. So anyway, it's about just the information presentation to us. If we could have a little bit more, that would help. I am a little bit confused when I go and move to the city work program items. When I look at the C I P list, because there, like, for instance, I had requested Stockelmeyer. And if that, if that project were to move ahead, would that get on to this list for this year, or is that something that would move on to, to next year? How would that, how would new projects that we have in the city work program items, which fit the bill for a C I P item, how do those then get moved?
It would be through the input we have received from the consensus of the council this evening, or, you know, we're talking again tomorrow night about the work plan, but based on your input, that's what we will bring back in June.
Okay, so if we were, if we were to agree on certain items which are C I P items, and I guess also with, with information presentation, I need to know what on the, the city work program fits under the category for a C I P item. And I think it's fairly easy to guess, but if that could be kind of marked a little, a little more straightforward, that would help as well. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I don't see any other hands raised, although I do have a couple of follow-on questions. And let me start my time here. They, they all have to do with Lawrence Midi. So first of all, I see that it's listed in category four. Why would an external funding source apply to Lawrence Midi when we've already allocated? So shouldn't it be a category three or category two? That's my first question.
We went back and forth on that one in particular because it was originally funded with Apple Funds. And so we actually moved it to category four because we thought that was more accurate. To note that, in that case, that's the only source that we have right now.
Well, it wasn't directly Apple Funds. It was funds that went from Apple to the city, and these are, these are, this is the city pots and cities' pot of money at this point.
That's true.
And this is back in two thousand and fifteen, before Apple even started directly funding any of these, you know, bike infrastructure-type of projects. So, and my, my concern is with the optics of it because it makes it look like it's a bit relegated to something that's a bit more nebulous. So I would request that this be placed back into category three or category two. My second question with regard to this project is derived from a concern that there is in a, a timeframe here that's not identified. It's stated that the Lawrence Midi process is now in annexation. So is there a time estimate for how long annexation will take? Second part of this question is what has been done so far with regard to annexation?
I can handle that question. Mayor, Members of Council, Chad Mosley, city engineer. The annexation process has been submitted to the city of San Jose. We are currently working to get that through the San Jose process. Actually have a meeting set up later this week with the planner who's working on that. Right now, we've estimated a completion of December of this year. I'm hoping to get it done sooner, but, you know, it's kind of out of our hands to a certain extent. This is a jurisdiction that, you know, we don't necessarily have the ability to, to manage. So we're working with them through the application process, and hopefully we'll have that done soon.
Okay, great to know. That's excellent information. So is, is LAFCO involved, or is it exclusively the city of San Jose? That is the Oversight Jurisdictional Agency?
LAFCO will be involved right now. We're, you know, because it is a San Jose, it's within San Jose's jurisdiction. We're kind of working through their process, getting the application ready to go. When I originally reached out to LAFCO about this, they said, work with San Jose, get an application ready, and then come back to us to talk with them. So we're getting to that point soon where we're going to roll LAFCO back in.
Okay, great. So, and, and finally, respecting timetables, and I understand that we have a lot on our plate. Is it possible to move design up to this upcoming fiscal year? Because when I see it categorized as probably going into twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three just to get a design, I wonder why it is that we need to prospectively potentially delay it from a month out from now to two years from that point. So I'm wondering why the decision to say that this might actually be not just a year in advance, but two years in advance where we're talking about a design.
So part of that is going to be, the city is going through an R F P process to establish a specific plan where we have some robust community outreach to get their input on what they want to see at this location. After we go through that process, then we'll go and, you know, we'll, we'll choose what we want to construct there, and then we'll go into design. This initial outreach, we're anticipating is going to be here. We're going to do some robust community outreach to make sure everybody has a chance to, to provide their inputs. We'll, we'll figure out what we want to build, and then we have to go through the actual design process and then, you know, bidding that out, so.
Okay, well, thank you. That's my time. So I appreciate that. So councilman Moore, you have your hand back up. Did you have another question you wanted to follow on? I'll remind you, you have roughly half a minute left of your time.
Okay, um, looking at the Carmen Road Bridge Right-of-Way project, I was wondering if there had been any consideration of improving the crossing at Blue Pheasant and Stevens Creek Boulevard to perhaps have some low-profile speed bumps that would just alert drivers that they were approaching that and putting the speed trailer so that people know what their speed is at that location. And that's got about between eleven thousand.
I'm sorry, that's the entirety of your time. So I'm sorry you didn't have that opportunity to ask the question, but councilmember Willie has his hand up. However, his time is only four seconds. So let, let me, in fairness, because of my notice, go over to the, the public commentary. If, if anybody would like to speak from the public. I noticed, councilmember Roy, you didn't speak, but you don't have your hand up either. And so I'll go ahead and call on Peggy Griffin first. Peggy is currently the only hand from the public that is up. And I'll remind members of the public that by the time the first member of the public is done speaking, you'll need to have your hand up. And if you do, I will call on you. If you don't, I, I will not. So welcome Peggy, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, council members, staff. I thank you for the presentation. I'd like a couple comments. The Memorial Park changes, I like those. My concern is that without an overall plan, doing work for the ponds and doing work on the amphitheater, you risk the possibility of having to redo or undo that work. And so I was concerned about that. And the other thing is the electric charging stations. I would like to ask that you not take any spaces out of the library, city hall area, parking spaces, because they're so valuable, and because you're planning to do a remodel, design changes, that could affect the parking, so installing them and then having to rip them out doesn't make sense. And I would hope that the Lawrence Mitty work could be done faster. It seems like it's just drug on, and I know you're dealing with multiple entities with a lot of paperwork and procedures. But it would be nice to see that actually become a park in my lifetime. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Peggy. There are actually no other members of the public with their hands up, and so I bring it back to council. I do note that we do have a reasonable amount of time left, approximately eighteen minutes. And when I look at the time remaining from our council members' four-minute allocations, we have Vice Mayor Chow with about a minute and Councilmember Roy with her entire four minutes. So I'll, I'll go ahead and allocate another two minutes to each of the council members, such that both Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Roy will have an extra two minutes as well. So would anyone like to speak first? I'll, I'll give the opportunity to Councilmember Roy because you haven't spoken yet and, you know, provided input.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I asked most of my questions during the agenda review, so I'm really familiar with it. Just a couple of questions that I think answered my question. So on the agenda review, I did ask about the internal, intercity hall, the half a million dollars. So right now, you're suggesting that just not doing that because we're doing the other, the other estimate, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so that's good. Okay, and then the, I have a question I forgot to ask at the agenda item. What is Stevens Creek Bank Repair Concept?
It is a, we did a, a design in order to have in our back pocket, so to speak, a plan for if there were a ten-year, twenty-year flood, that we needed to have a way to address what might happen in that area. So we have that design in our back pocket.
Okay, so that's a category two, so it means that's all we've finished?
Yeah, sorry, Roger, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, it, it's immediately adjacent to the city-owned Blush property, as we call it. There in the Blue, Blue Pheasant, like all of course. It, we, we've had a lot of erosion there back when we used to get rain, and we needed to have a design in place on how to deal with it.
So during the agenda review, Vice Mayor Chow asked a question, I kind of agree with her, on the, the traffic garden, you know, it's a great thing to have, but do we have space for it? And how big of a space we're looking at? If we did a study for seventy-five thousand dollars and found that our, our city doesn't have a space for it, then that would be money wasted. So we want to evaluate whether we do have the space for it, and Vice Mayor Chow was correct that we do have a small city that's probably difficult to accommodate a traffic problem.
We have our Safe Route to School Coordinator, Sri Walkaway, who's very familiar with the traffic garden concept. Can you speak on this, Sri?
Absolutely, thank you, Roger, and thank you for the question, Councilmember Roy. We believe that we'll need approximately an acre to build a, a really nicely designed traffic garden. And I have a few locations in mind. It would, of course, have to go through community input. Two things are listed tonight that could be potentials. The Lawrence Mitty parcel might be an, an option, as well as the Memorial Pond area. Those were both provided us.
Okay, okay, so my.
Sorry, Councilmember Roy, you froze for a second, at least on my computer.
I'm good.
Okay, um, okay, so, did, did you want to repeat your question?
We lost the last part of your last question.
Oh, oh, the last part wasn't a question, I would just recommend that maybe we should work on a space first. Once we have a space, then we should spend the money to do the, get a study. If we get a study, and then we have a space, that doesn't make sense to me. That's just my recommendation.
Yeah, and so you have three minutes. Director Lee, did you want to say something?
Well, and just to that point, I mean, the, the space is key. So our, the first part of the feasibility would determine space, if there's other agencies who would want to participate in it, and if we can't cross that threshold, then we're not going to be going forward with that robust of a feasibility study. So it would be, it would be incremental, and only would we go to the full extent if we had the space that really worked for us.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Okay, great. Our next council member with the hand raised is Councilmember Willie, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
So, so the first would be just a quick comment. You know, the Lawrence Mitty, since we already have secured that and purchased it, I would, I would hope that the resident engagement process would go ahead and, and start as soon as we get out of the, the COVID, which looks very near to. So that's just a comment there, to not delay that. And then the real comment that I've got, or the most important comment, is for Zach. And that is, you know, with this budget this year of fourteen point two million, and that drawdown that I'm still concerned about. The question to Zach is, is that if we were to reduce it from fourteen to twelve, what would the reserves look like at the ten-year point? How much of the drawdown would not have been drawn down if we're able to keep our belt tight between now and then?
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And if I, if I could just clarify, when you, when you're referring to bringing down the project list from fourteen million to twelve million, what the impact would be on unassigned fund balance?
Correct, in, in the sense that you said, at ten years from now, it's only going to have a balance of twelve thousand, I think. And I'm concerned at a future point, it's even less than it is today.
Sure.
Without an emergency.
Pretty sensible.
So, so currently, the, the twenty thirty-one projection for the general funds unassigned fund balance is at twelve million dollars. We're currently projecting to end this fiscal year with thirty-nine point one million. With expenditures growing at, at an increasing rate faster than the city's revenues, we'd be burning or using that unassigned fund balance over the next ten years, exactly to your point.
That's time. Okay, so, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Chow, you're next.
Sorry, I have quite a few items, I'll just go through them. First, traffic garden, I did some research. There are ways that you can do pop-up traffic garden that you can bring to every school site and turn a parking lot or even basketball court into temporary traffic garden. I think those, even the cost of doing that would not be even, with seventy-five thousand, you probably can do ten of them. And then I looked, there was the project in Washington DC. They installed two traffic gardens for the cost of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we are just studying, we are hiring consultants for seventy-five thousand dollars. I really need justification for that, and I'd like to know what's the estimated the cost of the final garden that justify this study for seventy-five thousand. Second, Torrey Avenue. I would like to see that likely a small business center in that location provide co-working space for the many people who are, have their small companies from home or from the garage. And then, so that this is a great co-working space for people, provide business and employment training. And third, the annual, we, we have allocated a bunch of annual grant. But then I checked the dashboard, I don't see much updates. I'd like to see updates, for example, the annual playground replacement for three hundred thousand dollars, and the park amenity for two hundred thousand dollars a year. And the satellite garden, we didn't have, there is not much update there either. Traffic calming project has really nice photos in the dashboard, but I'd like to know a little more about each project. And some residents responded that they would like to see some lighted sidewalks in the city. However, I don't know how they can respond to that. And then I have a question about the Stelling and Elves Avenue. Why are we moving an existing lighted sidewalk that seems to be working? Why are we removing that and moving it to the north side? Is that a waste of dollars? How much time do I have left?
You have thirty-five seconds.
Um, okay, I would, that's for now. Should I answer the Elves question?
I, I, I'm sorry, did you want?
The rest of them, I'd like some updates for, before the next meeting.
Okay, great. So let's go to council member Moore. Councilmember Moore, you have, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. First, I disagree. I recommend that we do not lease out Torrey to the public, and there's ample lease space available within the community. CUSD, I'd like CUSD to explore any underutilized land which could possibly be used for a traffic garden. I, I'm personally opposed to paving over Lawrence Mitty to create a traffic garden in that location because this is a park deprived east side of Cupertino. Let's not create impervious, impervious surfaces in our parks, on the east side in particular. And going back to the original comment regarding Carmen Road, if there is a safety issue, which it sounds like there is, on Stevens Creek Boulevard near Far Lap, then we should probably be putting out the speed detectors and some traffic calming devices so that people who are speeding in that dip are alerted to it. And we should probably also be looking at the Blaney Crossing on Stevens Creek Boulevard and Stevens Creek Boulevard in Finch, because you're looking at about thirty-five thousand trips per day. So I don't understand the particular focus on adding the bridge, when if we have safety issues, we should probably be reallocating that money now to make sure that the students are safe crossing Stevens Creek Boulevard as it is today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. You have forty-five seconds left. Anyone else like to give comments next? Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is up.
Yeah, one more point, Memorial Park, I agree with another council member that probably we shouldn't be doing amphitheater before the specific plan. And then the, the city did this, I think, a study on Memorial Park that's not mentioned at all by the staff, so I'd like to understand that. Yeah, so let's do a plan first before we do anything with amphitheater.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I'll, I'll go with my, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Moore, you have your, your hand up. You have forty-five seconds left.
I'm agreeing with Vice Mayor Chow that we should have a plan in place for Memorial Park before we start doing different sections. That seems like a willy-nilly approach, and we might end up with a bad result in the end.
Okay, great. So I'll, I'll make my comments with regard to Lawrence Mitty first. I think that we should be looking at outreach and design in this upcoming fiscal year. I think it's great that we're on a track to annex, and we've reached out to San Jose. So thank you very much to our staff for doing that. But I think that we can, in parallel with that, conduct the outreach as well as try to target a, a design achieved by the end of this fiscal year. It is, it is very adequately funded, and so I think that we should remove it from category four because it just doesn't, doesn't, I think, send the right message with regard to the prioritization and put it either in category two or three. With regard to ten-four fifty-five Torrey Avenue, I was going to ask for a language change with regard to the description, but my comment here is simply going to be that I hope that staff will work with council and the public. And I do see when you get a little bit more into the specific program description, that that's not just the overarching description. There is some indication that there's going to be outreach to the public. But I hope that there is some direct work with council, because this is not just exclusively a staff space, it's also the working environments of our city council as well. So those would be my comments for time being. Is there anybody else? And so just for, to note, I have about thirty seconds left. So remaining time under here, Councilmember Moore, you have thirty seconds. Councilmember Roy, you have approximately two and a half minutes. So Councilmember Roy.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So back to Memorial Park, I kind of agree we need to have a, a general complete plan, so then we can do the pond, amphitheater, and the areas were mentioned. Do we have a general plan for Memorial Park in place already? This seems to be, this is, um, the park recreation agenda for a long time.
I'm happy to answer that.
Thank you, Director.
Joanne McGreeney, I'm Director of Parks and Recreation. And so my understanding is through the process of developing the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan, there was some information gathered at that time, as, as it stated. Sorry, I'm trying to pull up my information about addressing the amphitheater and the walkway in the short term, because that is actually, you know, community feedback has indicated that they do not want changes to that area except for the upgrades to move the walking path behind the stage and things of that nature. As far as, there's been a little bit more work for community engagement and feedback on conceptual designs for that, that happened in two thousand eighteen during that process. So it's a little bit further along with community feedback and input.
Oh, okay, Mayor Paul, do I have a couple, one, one minute or something?
You have a little bit more than a minute.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the further question. If the general conceptual plan is done like the rest of the park, may not be, you know, big changes, then I think it's okay to do these three, these are the three major parts that I think that, that's right in the middle of Memorial Park. Because I, I wasn't, I'm not aware of how, what's the other features that may have been putting, people be proposing? Is there going to be a basketball court and this and that? It is, so my question is, if we do these first, are the, is it going to affect other areas so that we kind of put ourselves into an appeasement? Okay, I'm good.
Let me just add that on Memorial Park, whatever you do, you're going to have to take the ponds out. Right, whatever the plan is, whatever the current plan says, you got to take the ponds out. So that's, that's, and then the other one is that amphitheater also includes ADA compliance.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for putting that question out there. And so that is Councilmember Roy's time. Councilmember Moore, you have thirty seconds, as do I. Did you want to have a final comment? Well, nor do I. I, I think we've set forth a number of good questions and comments on the capital improvement programs, projects. And so I thank our staff for putting this together. And did anyone want to make any final comments on this? I see our city manager, as well as the Director of Public Works, have their hands raised. So let me work backwards from there and go first to the Director of Public Works, then.
I defer to, I defer to Roger.
We'll give you the last word there. All right, Roger, take it away.
Yes, yeah, thank you, and a very good discussion. This is the kind of input that we were, we were hoping to get. So from, from my notes, for, for Lawrence Mitty, there seems, there is a desire to move with community outreach and design to the extent that we can this coming fiscal year. Is that, is that what I'm hearing from council?
I think that's fair, yeah, just to the extent that we can. I mean, we're not trying to push you to the point where, you know, it's.
Yeah, to, to, yeah, to the extent that it's practical. I mean, we, the, the dollars are, are available, and we come to council for, so we'll set aside and look at that project description. For Memorial Park, the, the master plan, as Director McGreeney was stating, it, it says we need an amphitheater, it needs to be at Memorial Park. You know, that is the location for it, the geography and all that is there. The ponds, as, as City Manager Deb Fang said, the, the ponds have to be removed regardless of what comes with the specific plan. So it's, it's our sincere intent, another thing that we would do with, with those two projects are going to be undone by what a specific plan would generate. are going to be undone by what a specific plan would generate there. So that being said, we'll be proceeding with Memorial Park unless I hear different right now. In terms of requesting funding, come June fifteen.
I see nodding, Roger.
And and of course, we'll, we can provide more information as you may request.
Okay, great. And because time is limited, Vice Mayor Chow, I'll give you fifteen seconds because you seem to be wanting to respond to Director Lee's comment there.
Could the staff provide a little more clarification on the status of Memorial Park a master plan that the city funded? I remember it, it was a very short plan. It wasn't really, even the public engagement wasn't really extensive. So council member Hong, we didn't know, I think. So I would like to know what exactly was in there. And yes, how much, why do we really need an early action on amphitheater?
Okay, so let's let's do this. Let's follow up on that informational item. Let's let's get that information over to us as a final request there. If we could do another brief check-in to council on the on the Memorial Park action plan, so to speak, I think that would, that's a fair question to ask with regard to what's been done previously on on a master plan related to to that park. So and and the reason I asked that we do that, you know, another option, we could try to continue this, but we're at six forty one now, and I want to be able to start our regular meeting on time and give everyone a bit of a break. And so what we'll do is we'll wrap this up. And I remind you, if you want to continue this discussion, just please indicate so on postponements and orders of the day under our regular agenda. So at six forty two now, I'll go ahead and conclude our special special session, and in three minutes, we'll reconvene for the regular meeting. Thanks very much.
Do we stay here?
Six forty five, six forty six, on May fourth, two thousand twenty one. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the oral call.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
I'm here. Okay, so the first item is to report out on a special closed session meeting, which was held on April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one. And as stated previously, as mayor this year, I'm going to try to have on roughly the fourth Tuesday of the month, a session with regard to pending and potential litigations involving the city. This this was held on a Thursday because we had another meeting, special meeting scheduled for Tuesday, twenty seventh. The first item was pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point ninety one, a conference, a conference with legal counsel regarding the following existing litigation. First, A, Wong Family versus City of Cupertino, Santa Clara County Superior Court Case Number nineteen CV three four seven three one six. And B, City of Cupertino versus Jennifer Chang, Santa Clara County Superior Court Case Number two one CV three eight oh two nine one. And the report out is that council discussed with legal counsel these pending cases for which discussion in open session would prejudice the city in the litigation, and no reportable action was taken. The second item was pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point ninety four, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding initiation of litigation with two potential cases. And the report out is that council discussed with legal counsel the potential initiation of litigation in open session for two matters for which discussion in open session would prejudice the city in the potential litigation, and no reportable action was taken on on those items. So that is the report out from closed session for August twenty ninth. And at this point, we are on to the first agendized item on our regular meeting schedule. And that is under ceremonial matters and presentations. We have as our first item, a proclamation for Public Works Week. And we do have our city manager here as well as the Director of Public Works. And I would like to hand it over to our city manager for the for for the pleasure of introducing our Public Works Department and its and its chair. Director.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Mr. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works, for this proclamation for Public Works Week. I thought every week was Public Works Week, but I might have been mistaken.
Well, if I do have an opportunity to speak, I will. This is this is for all Public Works professionals. And I I just have the pleasure of being able to represent, you know, the the fine group that we have here at the city. And that would not happen without all the support that we have from city council, the mayor, vice mayor, and our community. So thank you very much for that. And I think with this with this year in particular, very proud in how we were able to really get into what essential services we needed to ramp up on quickly with COVID, provide those those services and and really just react positively with really good communications with the community on, you know, things that they're seeing and how their lives have changed working from home and how we were accommodating the additional needs that they had in their different environment. So I just appreciate the recognition. And with Public Works Week being May sixteenth through the twenty second, it's just an ideal opportunity. So again, thank you for all the support. I'll be passing it on to, you know, all the all the all the fine men and women we have off the city hall at the service there. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee. And on behalf of the city council, we very much support and thank your department and all its excellent staff for delivering its services to our city. So very much deserved proclamation. And thank you for your ongoing efforts to outreach to the public to show them on an annual and ongoing basis more and more of what Public Works has been delivering for the city over the years. All right, so now we are going on to item number two. And this is a presentation from NPR SD, which is the MidPen's Regional Open Space District. We have a couple of board members from MidPen here, Yoriko Kishimoto and Pete Siemens. And so I'd like to welcome board members Kishimoto and Siemens. That and and they'll be provided ten minutes. If you'd like to divvy that up between presentation time and discussion time, happy to do that. But you have the floor. Welcome. Oh, do I need to unmute?
Board Member Siemens, you are muted. You might want to unmute yourself.
How's that?
Perfect.
Is that better? Joshua Hugge is supposed to be running a kind of a PowerPoint. So I don't see, he's supposed to be, oh, there he goes. Okay. Very good. All righty, thanks, Josh. Okay, I just introduced myself. I'm Pete Siemens. I've been your director for quite a number of years. I represent Los Gatos, Saratoga, Monteserino, and probably the the west side, most of the west side of Deanza Boulevard. And Yoriko Kishimoto has basically the rest of Cupertino. Okay, next slide. Good. Just real quick, we were formed as a grassroots organization in nineteen seventy two by, in a, in Nonette Hankel's living room at Palo Alto. And since then, we've acquired over sixty five thousand acres and have two hundred and forty miles of trails. Everything at the district is open, free to the public. We don't discriminate anybody from wherever they are. And then we passed a three hundred million dollar voter approved obligation bond about six years ago to increase our access. Next slide. This is basically what we offered to the public, hiking trails and mountain bike trails, dog-friendly areas, one backpack camp. We have docent-led hikes, which is kind of on hold for, because of the virus. But it's going to be ramping up again shortly. And the volunteer opportunities somewhat limited, but we have over three hundred, probably three to four hundred docents and volunteers that work with the district. And so a lot of, lot of public engagement. Next slide. This is kind of our jurisdictional area. It goes from below Mount Aminum in the south all the way up to the edge of Pacifico, up Pacifica in the north. And we go from the bay to the San Mateo coast. So it's a pretty, pretty big jurisdictional area that we serve. And we have about seven hundred thousand residents within the district. Next slide. This is an example of one of our close by preserves. It's up at the end of Page Mill, Russian Ridge, Overspace Preserve, beautiful poppies. Long Ridge is right next to it, and we have a nature center and a pond that's fun to visit if people want to get a little bit further away from Rancho. Next slide. This Mount Aminum was opened about three to four years ago and is one of our gems at the district, something that's totally new for the district. But we managed to recontour the top of the mountain and and get that beautiful, awesome location open to the public. And if you haven't been up there yet, I really encourage you to go. Next slide. Okay, you know about Fremont Older? That's next, right next to Cupertino. Next slide. And Paquette, it's kind of a hidden gem. Paquette is a really neat preserve. It's off of the end of Foothill Boulevard. And you go past Stevens Creek Park and up past the quarry there and up Mount Abello Road. And it's a beautiful area to hike, a great alternative to trying to park at Rancho, which is really difficult on weekends. Paquette also has a winery that's owned by the district and leased out to a winery operator, winery operator, pardon me. They make very excellent wine there. Next slide. And then Bear Creek was open a couple of years ago. It's in, close into my area. And one of the, one of my big, big deals was to get the board to agree to move this up on the agenda and get this preserve open. And it's got a number of trails open on phase one. Beautiful parking area with a lake you can walk around. It's about a, you know, a quarter mile walk around the lake. And a great place to go if you don't want to hike too far or if you want to look and see some old growth, old growth redwood, then you can hike up the trail a couple of miles. Just a, just a beautiful gem of a, of a park and not too far. It's just off of, it's by Lexington Reservoir. And it's probably about ten minutes out of Los Gatos. So it's a really close in, easy to find preserve. And and like I say again, another good alternative to try to fight the traffic at Rancho. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to introduce Yoriko Kishimoto, who was the other board member with me. And she's going to talk about what's new and some project updates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Yes, good evening, Mayor Paul and councilmembers. My name is Yoriko Kishimoto, and I represent Ward Two on the MidPen Open Space. I also represent the special districts on LAFCO. And I'm one of the two people there who oversee the countywide fire services study. So I have just a couple of minutes to give you a peek at at our, some of our recent projects. Next slide, please. So one is Ranch of San Antonio that Director Siemens just mentioned. It's it's so successful, it's very hard to find parking. It's by far our most popular preserve. And we just last week approved a suite of measures to take. We want to make it easier for people to bike to Ranch of San Antonio, to take shuttles, carpool. And and actually, at some point, we want to reach out to Cupertino. So I'm glad we're talking to you tonight. So for example, Crystal Ray, is there a way that we, you know, make it easier for people to bike, bike in there there? Will you be starting up your shuttle system again soon? And is there like a place for car park and ride lots nearby? And Ranch Stevens Creek Trail is really wonderful. Is there a way to connect Ranch Stevens Creek Trail to Ranch of San Antonio? So these are things that we can't do on our own. We need cities like Cupertino. Next slide. Saratoga to the Sea, I've just mentioned, this is a project that we did with Saratoga to connect to Skyline and Beyond. Next slide. Highway seventeen, this is, we're looking at two crossings of seventeen. One is for wildlife, which is kind of the main project we're working on, but also for for people that mountain lions need a region larger than our peninsula to roam, to stay, keep a healthy population. Next slide, please. Lehigh is, I know, been on Cupertino's radar as well. And so we really appreciate Director Lee, I think, has been pretty active in working on this. As you know, Lehigh has been, has a proposal to force the county to expand its mining. And our MidPen Board has appointed a special ad hoc board committee to oversee this and to come up to review the proposal and come up with recommendations. So we, let's say about a month ago, our general manager sent a letter out to everyone, including Cupertino, which lists our priorities of our, what what MidPen is most concerned with. You know, one is the ridge line easement, which Lehigh is proposing to move or take, reduce. Another is to, is protecting the water quality, including permanent creek and the groundwater. So as both being neighbors, this is very important for the two agencies to work on. Next slide. The wildlands, as you know, we're, we're already in wildfire season. It's a, we're in, it's another unprecedented year, summer of drought. So this is a big program of ours since we manage sixty thousand acres. The final EIR was just released a few days ago. And we're going to be hearing it as a board next week, May, May twelfth, next week or a week after. And what this involves extensive vegetation clearing, maintenance of fire roads and emergency access, et cetera. So basically, we're aggressively reducing the fuel loads, six times what we used to do. So we're taking this very, very seriously. And I know I'm kind of out of time, but I'll stand there. And if there's any time for questions, we'd love to.
Okay, well, thank you, Directors Kishimoto and Siemens. I think we have time for one brief question from council. Would anyone like to ask a question of of the directors? I, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Wei had her hand up first. Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor. So so my question is, I'm very concerned with the Lehigh's expansion and the recommendation plan. So the subcommittee you appointed, are they working with, like Cupertino and different regions to go to Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors to work with the board supervisors? You know, it's just a really concerning point.
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm on that subcommittee, so I can respond to that. So there's three of us on it. And we, so far, yes, we were definitely in communications with the county and our our supervisor, Supervisor Joseph Midian. And we're, in a way, we, with the submission of that letter out, we're just beginning to to reach out to the neighboring communities like Cupertino. So perhaps that's coming in the near future, our our opportunity to work with. So if you, if you, if you want to appoint one of your councilmembers to be like a liaison, then maybe that's one possibility, or 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 we're happy to work with your staff as well.
Well, thank you so much. Let's keep those lines of communication open. We're very grateful for both Directors Kishimoto and Siemens of MidPen for being here today. And we'll talk to you more in the future, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Have a great night. So we'll go to oral communications. But before we do that, we're at postponements and orders of the day. And what I would like to ask is that someone bring forward a motion that includes at least bringing item number fourteen, which is field use policy, before item number thirteen, which relates to our fee schedule. Because of the municipal code statutory ordering of items, the the field use item needs to be placed after fee schedule on our agenda. However, we should get the field use issues resolved before we get to field use. I'm sorry, before we get to fee schedule. And so I'd like to have a motion that places item fourteen in front of item thirteen. As a follow-up to our discussion on the study session, I did say at the end of the study session that we could continue that study session discussion because there was one particular item, in particular, the discussion regarding Memorial Park that we could have finished up. But there was also an informational item attached to that. So I I wouldn't personally recommend that we make that extension right now. And I could refer this to our city manager as to whether we could perhaps. And I could refer this to our city manager as to whether we could perhaps uh, get that follow-up and uh, revisit it briefly in uh, perhaps the May 18th meeting. Or, you know, another option is to get that information with regard to what was requested. Uh, we do have a um, we do have a special meeting tomorrow. And so to the extent that we make a continuation at the end of this evening, uh, we could just uh, visit this item very briefly at that point. So, so those are, those are a couple of options. So um, can I have that motion, however, with regard to reordering agenda item fourteen uh, to uh, fall uh, before item thirteen?
Uh, so moved.
Okay, great. Councilmember Wei moves and is there a second?
Hold a second.
Uh, Councilmember Willie seconds, great. Okay, so I'm not hearing a desire to continue our discussion from the study session onto our regular meeting. And so Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct roll call vote on that motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. So the order of the agenda will be as listed, except for item fourteen, uh, will be heard before item thirteen. The next item is oral communications. I see that we uh, have members of the public attending and I don't see any hands up at this point. Um, and so if there are any members of the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda, please raise your hand uh, in Zoom at this point. Okay, I still don't see any hands raised and so we will go back to the agendaized item. We're at reports by council and staff. Item number three is really a response to wanting to speak immediately to uh, members of the public during oral communications. Um, and these are brief reports on council member activities and brief announcements. Uh, uh, this is, the, the, the key word is brief, of course. And so if there is a one-minute summary that council members would like to provide, um, irrespective of the fact that we didn't have oral communications, um, that you'd like to share with the public uh, before we go on to the rest of the agenda, please feel free to raise your hand. And I see Councilmember Willie has a, has a hand raised.
Yeah, uh, although no, no residents uh, wanting to speak tonight, but I, I was surprised when I received our city email about the uh, community gardens are now reopening. And so I'd like to be sure all our community are aware that the community gardens, 93 garden beds are now available for rent. And I think seniors, pretty much anyone, but seniors, uh, children, uh, take advantage of that. You know, notify the city if you'd like to rent one of them. And that'll be it for tonight.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And I don't see any other hands raised. Uh, Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'll take a minute um, to let the public know that our city really is very good at communicating with our um, um, residents, not just the website, but also the scene just came out. And also um, uh, city manager Deb and I just hosted our second food for thought. So there are multiple champ, channels for residents to communicate and for the cities to communicate with our residents.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Our uh, next comment is from Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, Councilmember Willie has, is organizing a round table with me. I, I'll yield my time to him to describe that. What's the date? I'm not entirely sure.
Okay, great. Uh, we'll take it back to Councilmember Willie. Did you want to speak to that, the roundtable date that you?
Okay. Briefly, we uh, we're uh, kind of planning on either the 20th or the 21st this month. And uh, Vice Mayor and I will pick that date this week and then uh, noticing will start going out. And one of these topics that we hope to cover will be housing in Cupertino. There's so many different topics to that uh, conversation. Let's hear what uh, some of our uh, residents would like and are concerned about, things of that nature. It's open discussion. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I think, uh, sorry.
Oh, Vice Mayor Chow.
Can I add that the housing survey is soon finished and so it should be coming out pretty soon. Um, the residents can, there will be one month open period for people to respond.
Okay, very good, thank you. So we'll go on to item number four on our agenda. That's a city manager update on emergency response efforts. Welcome, City Manager Feng.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it short today. Uh, the case rate is flattening in Santa Clara County, but we are not expected to go into the yellow tier in the near future. We don't qualify. Uh, we have a pretty low positivity rate of 1% with an equity rate of 1.8%. Uh, good news on the vaccine front. Uh, 70.4% of the county population is vaccinated with one dose and 42.9% are completely vaccinated. A lag in our younger people um, appears to be uh, uh, the reason for this, for the difference in the numbers, primarily due to the fact that they didn't become eligible till much, uh, much more recently than others. The county could open vaccine appointments to everyone. Um, this was an interesting announcement on Saturday, meaning people from outside the county, including visitors, even those from outside the country, could actually get vaccinated um, potentially in Santa Clara County. Testing, there is another testing opportunity at the senior center scheduled tomorrow from 9:30 to 3:45 at the senior center. Plenty of appointments are available. In Cupertino, there are 908 cases by zip code and 919 cases by city. From the last city council meeting, I reported 877 cases by zip code and 888 cases by city. Uh, somewhat of a, uh, appreciable increase, uh, but still the lowest ca- case rate per 100,000 in the county. Most of Cupertino is at 75% vaccinated, uh, with our lowest area at 64%. So we are doing very well overall. And that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you, City Manager Feng. We are on to item number five on our agenda. And item number five is our report on our committee assignments that we have as our respective council committee assignments to outside agencies and some internal committees as well. Would anyone like to go first on reports out on committee assignments since April 20th? If not, I will go ahead and uh, state that uh, ever since April 20th, we've had uh, several VTA closed session meetings with regard to the general manager search. That search continues. There has been a joint powers authority meeting of the county library system, of which I'm one of the board members and assigned from Cupertino. Um, the county library system, which will come to, no surprise to anyone, I'm sure, uh, has been weathering the pandemic very, uh, very readily and has been doing a fantastic job of providing services uh, to our uh, residents and users of the library system to the extent that is uh, safe and possible. And uh, we also had a West Valley Mayor's and Managers Meeting um, between our last regular council meeting and today. Um, we just received updates from the other West Valley cities with regard to uh, things like um, PG&E, which had a couple of representatives there. There are some uh, there are some concerns certainly with regard to uh, the fuel load and the dryness of the fuel load uh, in the mountains these um, these days. And um, so we're looking at the um, public safety power shut offs. Um, yeah. And, and they gave us some decent information on that. So um, with regard to the rest of the cities, um, they seem to be uh, weathering the pandemic uh, in much, much as we are, uh, very carefully and um, in a uh, stepwise and, and, and hopeful fashion for um, an impending reopening. So I see that um, no one actually has their hand up right now uh, with regard to committee reports. Would anyone like to go next? Vice Mayor Chow? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Chow, you'll, you'll need to unmute yourself.
So on the 26th of April, we had audit committee meeting and we reviewed the treasuries investment report. And uh, we also had to continue the meeting to May 24th at 4:00 PM. And we set the future meetings to be Mondays quarterly. I think first Mondays quarterly, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I don't see any other hands raised at this point and so on, uh, Councilmember Moore, you have a few hand raised.
Uh, right, I'm also assigned to the um, the audit committee. And I just want to actually recommend that uh, members of the public go and look at the agenda items, um, the materials that are provided. If you're interested in finance, um, the markets, um, how the city invests, it, there, there's some really excellent reports in there. Uh, they're really informative, um, and the meetings, you know, please attend. They're really enjoyable and very educational. Uh, so just want to have a pitch for that, thanks.
Excellent, thank you, Councilmember Moore. All right, uh, we are on to our consent calendar now. Um, and the consent calendar for tonight is items six through 10. Are there any members of council that would like to pull any of the items from six through 10 from the calendar? And I see Councilmember Wei has her hand raised.
Uh, if I want to ask a question, doesn't mean that I have to pull it out?
You would need to pull it, yes, in order to.
Then it's not a, it's not a real important question, so I won't.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Uh, I.
Yes, City Clerk, Squirtia.
Um, I did receive an email from a member of the public, JR Fruin, um, regarding the approval of the April 20 council minutes. He requested a modification to his public comments for item number 10. Um, it is a desk item tonight as well for council. I can um, read the change that he's requesting or I can um, make the change and bring the minutes back for approval at the next meeting.
Um, let's, let's pull it, um, because in order to do that, we should, we should have some instruction from council to do so. So let's uh, let, let's pull item seven, thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so I don't see any other hands raised from council. I do see one hand raised from the public. And so I'll go to the public for the purpose of asking uh, the person with her hand raised, whether she is asking to um, pull item uh, six, seven, eight, nine, and or 10 from the consent calendar. I see Amy Jesper. Uh, Amy, is your comment with regard to?
No, sorry, uh, I put Zoom on this iPad just now and it's uh, too quirky for me right now, sorry. I couldn't tell if my hand was up or down.
Okay.
It's supposed to be down, sorry.
Okay, sounds good. We'll, we'll go back to the consent calendar then. Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion for items six, eight, nine, and 10 on consent.
I move, oh, six.
No, we'll go by hands. Who looks the hand raise will be able. All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. I, I see Vice Mayor Chow with her.
You want a recent.
Uh, I'll just go by the hands, so people don't talk over each other. So we have Vice Mayor Chow, you motion and for the second, we'll do the same thing. If you put your hand up first, you'll, you'll be able to say. And Councilmember Wei?
I'll second it.
Okay, excellent. Um, any discussion on six, eight, nine, or 10 with regard to the consent? Uh, well, I guess not, since there are consent. Madam City Clerk, would you please take a roll call vote on those items?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and so we have item number seven as described by our city clerk. And so what I would like to propose, and I'll just place this as a motion, um, assuming that there are no clarifying questions, and I don't see any hands up from the uh, public, that we uh, take the uh, comment that was provided to our city clerk, uh, make the modification requested and bring back the minutes in our May 18th minute, uh, May, May 18th meeting uh, to review for approval. Um, I see Councilmember Moore with her hand up. Councilmember Moore?
Uh, I just have a, a, you know, quick question. Um, I, I do see one line uh, from um, uh, JR Fruin for item 10. Was that the item in question? And I, okay, and could I hear before we do all that? Could I hear what the change proposed is?
Yes, so his proposed um, amendment is to say JR Fruin referred to written comments and raised concern that the ordinance would not meet HCD's definition of incentivizing affordable housing production.
Okay, and is that um, something that um, uh, Madam City Clerk, that you're, you're going to go review the tape and when it comes back, so we'll know? Or, or how will we know if it's accurate?
Yes, I actually did have a chance before the meeting to quickly review his comments and it does fit within what he said.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, great. So I placed a motion on the table and would anyone like to second the motion?
Second it.
Okay, great. Uh, and again, this is to bring back the draft minutes after the uh, change requested has been made uh, in our next uh, regular meeting. And so Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, excellent. And we are on to item number 11 on our agenda. That's the second reading of ordinances and the item is to consider and act on ordinance number 21-2226, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino to adopt changes to chapter 19.56, density bonus of the Cupertino municipal code, to allow increased density bonuses for projects providing higher percentages of affordable units in a housing development project. And so uh, this being a second reading, we do have staff on hand. We have our outside council on hand as well. Uh, however, um, without any uh, modifications or um, changes to the, the first reading, um, I will ask whether uh, staff has anything to add to what has been uh, covered in our first reading. And I see head, head shakes. And so um, nothing to clarify from uh, council, although Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised. Vice Mayor Chow.
No, I will just try to move the item.
Okay, well, let me go to any members of the public uh, who may have any comments. I don't see any hands raised there either. And so I'll go ahead and um, bring it back to you, Vice Mayor Chow, since your hand was raised on this. And you wanted to uh, move the second reading and uh, move for enactment, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll try that.
Okay.
So I move that ordinance number 21-2226 be read by title only and now the city clerk is reading constitute the second reading thereof. Upon approval, I move that the ordinance number 21-2226 be enacted.
Okay, very good. And is there a second for Vice Mayor Chow's motion? And again, by, just a show of hands on Zoom. Okay, um, okay, Councilmember Willie, uh, I'll just ask you to raise your hand on Zoom. Just to get us all into that practice, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, hold a second.
Very good. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Um, and so the ordering of this, uh, I, I will ask at this point um, that we hold off on the second reading until after we have any uh, completed discussion. Does anyone have any discussion points on this second um, second reading uh, motion item? I see Councilmember Wei with her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I, um, you know, I voted no on this one on the first reading, so I just want to explain why I voted no. I have nothing against the ordinance itself. I just feel that we need to wait a little bit for the other lawsuit to come uh, more clear, so that we can totally avoid it. So my nay vote doesn't mean that I'm against the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Moore?
I, I have a general comment about density bonus law. I think the um, the elements of the um, waivers and concession, uh, concessions, um, they've been problematic and we've, uh, it seems like we've needed to rely on case law about that. And uh, I, I hope that that gets um, straightened out for that particular bit of legislation in the future. Um, and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow?
So I'd like to clarify, there is no current lawsuit related to this item or similar to this item, right? There was um, another city who adopted the, um, uh, density bonus and HCD, send them a letter. But then I believe we have gotten advice from the attorney that the natures are different. Can we get some clarification? There is no lawsuit that way is ongoing in another city regarding this item.
So that was a question from Vice Mayor Chow. Would staff like to answer that question with regard to any pending lawsuits on this?
I'd like, um, our special counsel Barb Couts, would you be able to take a shot?
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Welcome, Ms. Couts. Barb. Uh, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Uh, I'm not aware of any uh, current lawsuits related to uh, this issue. Or to, you know, there have been, let's say, I, I, we look for density bonus lawsuits, and there've been, there, they've all been at the superior court level. I mean, the last one, I mean, in terms of recent cases, the ones we've been able to find are primarily in LA, and they're primarily by residents attacking city approvals of density bonuses. So, but I'm not aware currently of any lawsuits regarding density bonuses in the Bay Area. That doesn't mean they don't exist. It's just that I, you know, I'm not personally aware of them and haven't read any news articles about them. So as far as, as I'm aware, there, and there's no, there are no, there's no litigation that I'm aware of relating to this particular issue.
Thank you, Barb. I see a, a hand raised from Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah. I'd just like to make a, a comment, you know, that we hear comments that somehow our ordinance wouldn't meet HCD requirements. You know, we, we need to all be very thoughtful about our communities. And Sacramento's one size fits all, truly, one size fits all. Obviously, that's not, not reasonable. And so we are looking at our community and trying to get as much housing as we can, as much affordable housing as we can. And developers can come to us at any time and ask for even more density, and we will give it a lot of sincere thought. And we will then be looking at what is the impact that would result from it? What benefits might we, we be able to get for the community? You know, blanket statements, just one size fits all are not right. And we are all focused on getting more affordable housing for this community. And I think this allows us a little bit more flexibility than if we essentially have no control over it, and it's just by right. And so I, I do think we need to get that message out and be sure that people understand it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor Chow, I do see your hand back up. Let me give you another brief opportunity if you had a follow-up comment. And then, Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify like Councilmember Willie. This ordinance, in fact, incentivizes more affordable housing because the state law adopted the one size fits all will discourage more affordable housing since the, it requires less number, percentage of affordable housing than the city currently requires. So that's why we adopt this, so we can encourage more affordable housing, which we really need. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, thank you very much. You know, I withheld comments the first time around. I, I really wanted to think about what I wanted to say on this before we, we passed the second reading and enacted. And I thank our city attorney for taking a brief amount of time to discuss this in between first reading and second reading with me. It really helped to crystallize some of the thoughts that I had on this. And, you know, I, I really think that it should earn that fifth vote, not to put any pressure on you, Councilmember Wei, but I think, you know, at the end of the day, if you really look at how our city operates and how we deliver entitlements, and how the developers are looking at our regulatory framework and, and what they ask for, this in fact puts us in a better position to deliver more affordable housing. And so, you know, very straightforwardly put, what ends up happening with a 50% density bonus is that if you apply the requirements that we have here in this 40% density bonus, you would actually have greater amounts of affordable housing if that 40% ratio is applied to 50%. Now, what happens in our city? You, you know, we, we have basically one data point with regard to the invocation of a density bonus recently. And, and that's the Oaks Shopping Center, the Westport Project. And so what, what was done there was that the density bonus was invoked, but those units weren't even used to their maximal effect. And, and so, you know, what you'll end up seeing is that, you know, a 40% density bonus is, is very significant. In Cupertino, it is unlikely to be invoked to its maximal extent. And it's also, even if invoked, it's unlikely to be used to its maximal extent. But if you look at what happens with the development community, if they want a modification, they will ask for a modification. I mean, I, I've never met a developer in our city that is shy about asking for a general plan amendment. And in fact, if it reaches Cupertino's council, you know, more often than not, there is a general plan amendment tied to it. And so if we have a baseline of 40%, where the ratio of affordable housing is higher, then what ends up happening is if the developer wants an amendment and wants a 50% density bonus, then applying the ratio that we have in this ordinance here that we're considering, then we end up getting more than what this AB 2345 is, is mandating. And so I, I think this puts us in, in excellent starting point. And if we end up having a developer that truly wants to go above and beyond this, this unprecedentedly large amount of density bonus, then we put ourselves in a great bargaining position. This is why I think, in fact, this is superior to the state law insofar as making sure that we get the delivery of not just units, but affordable units of housing. So, so that's why I, I'm actually, I, I don't shy away from this support at all. I think we've made an excellent piece of legislation here. And I, I do hope, you know, when you consider that, Councilmember Wei, you would consider supporting the second reading. Councilmember Wei, you now have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul, for your input. And so I, I really like to emphasize that I'm nothing against this ordinance. I feel very comfortable with it. I'm just very concerned about the letters that, of HCD to that city. And are we, by doing this, are we going to receive that letter? And, you know, get onto the state's radar again, saying that Cupertino is doing something different and something not conforming? And then, you know, we're not, we don't have a good reputation already. I just feel that we don't want to exasperate that, that image, that that's the only thing I feel really uncomfortable. I totally agree with you. I have nothing against this ordinance, and I really very comfortable saying yes to it. I just feel that, you know, we're, we're doing this, we're getting into the state's radar one more time. And I feel, I really don't feel comfortable doing it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. I, I will respond, but let me give Councilmember Moore an opportunity to, to speak. She has her hand up.
And, and how much time do I have?
We're, we're ahead of schedule. And so, you know, I think people have been very succinct with their comments, so, so please, you know, feel free to leave your comments. I'll, I'll let you know if we're, you know, going a bit over.
Okay. Mayor Paul, I just wanted to add a little bit more information on the topic that you were discussing, which is Westport. They left 53 units affordable, I'm not affordable, 53 market rate units on the table. They qualified for 35% density bonus. And those 53 units, they, they could have been units for families, they could have been unit, units for students. But those, inexplicably, were not, were not chosen to, to be built. And I, and I think that that's, that's a problem. And I do take exception with the, the city reputation. I think that really seemed to have been spearheaded, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed to be spearheaded by the author of SB 35. And that project, when you look at how density bonus was used and how the below-market-rate units were constructed in the project, again, the, the below-market-rate units were studio and one bedroom. They were 388 square feet, 528 square feet for the one bedrooms. They were not of sufficient size, even though our below-market-rate manual, our, our rules say that they need to be comparable. They took that as a, as a concession. And there, the word discrimination has been taught, tossed around, that there was discrimination against families with children who would need affordable units. The market rate units in that project go up to 4,600 square feet. They're huge. Five bedrooms. So you didn't have comparable units of the below-market rate and market rate programming there. So I, I really take exception about that, the reputation of the city of Cupertino. I think that that was part of a marketing plan, and we were targeted over and over and over again. The Valco project was called a housing project, completely ignoring the fact that it had 1.81 million square feet of office. It was going to generate a deficit of at least thousands of units. We'll say about 5,000 employees would need to go find housing somewhere else. And that's while using a housing law to worsen the housing shortage. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I think as councilmembers, it's important that we don't fall into the common trap that's being set by people who are, were meant to come and attack us. I think we have facts on our side. So as councilmembers, we should stand up strong and tell everyone that Cupertino approved the five housing element project sites in our current housing element and approved all five of them. And they all have requested a density bonus, and I think except the Marina. And, but I think we have been pretty successful in approving projects. Whether they can be built or not is something out of our control. So our reputation should be very good, but then it's up to us to continue to repeat, to correct the message, the correct the misconception people has. And if HCD has this misconception from reading a news article, then it's our responsibility to correct them. HCD should know that we have been performing as much as we can. And, and then I think we, I trust our attorneys and have confidence that this ordinance is full, full within the, the legal authority that we have, and that actually what we adopt here promotes more affordable housing, which is what HCD also wants. Thank you.
Okay. You, you know, I, I had some follow-up comments, but suffice it to say, it wasn't precisely how I would have said it, but, but Councilmember Moore and Vice Mayor Chow, you, you covered my, my points. You know, and I really think, I, I'll just make this final part. And, you, you know, I, I think at the end of it, we're not in a dictatorship, we're not in an autocracy, we're in a democratic system of governance. And we don't get vetoed by, you know, the county. The county doesn't get vetoed by the state. The state doesn't get vetoed by the federal government. We are in a system of federalism. You know, there are states with state rights, localities have locality rights. But at the end of the day, it is about the discussion process. And if we are putting forward legitimate points, and we're actually making the purposes of the intents of trying to deliver more affordable housing and help solve the housing crisis, if we are demonstrably making these efforts better, then I'm very proud of the discussion that we're having. And, you know, I'm, I'm equally proud, if not more so, to support the legislation that we have a second reading of tonight. So, you know, thank you very much for, everyone for their, their comments. You know, we absolutely welcome the dialogue. I, I hope that we can turn the corner in terms of reputational issues, but, you know, at, at the end of the day, you can only do so much with regard to the various incentives out there. But I will say that, you know, as mayor, I'm going to keep an open dialogue and, and open mind on, on discussion points. So thanks very much to each and every member of our community. And I think this is legislation that we can and should be proud of. So Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the second reading of this ordinance, and then upon that completion, conduct the roll call vote.
This is, this is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 21-2226, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino to adopt changes to Chapter 19.56, density bonus of the Cupertino Municipal Code to allow increased density bonuses for projects providing higher percentages of affordable units in a housing development project, which includes the finding that adoption of this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Nay.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with Wei voting no.
Very good. Thank you very much. And we are on to public hearings. That is item number 12. And item number 12 is a consideration of municipal code amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 10.90, expanding existing policies to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke, including in multi-unit housing, entryways, public events, service areas, and outdoor work site. Madam City Manager, would you like to introduce the staff presentations?
I can jump in. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager. We're here to discuss reducing exposure to secondhand smoke. You all have seen this ordinance on March 2nd. If you recall, you did do a first reading of that ordinance that we had that evening. We did make the change that it would be inclusive of attached ADUs. Again, as a reminder, it required smoke-free multi-unit housing, entryways, public events, service areas, outdoor work sites. At that meeting, we also received direction to look into designated smoking areas and possibly a setback from neighboring properties, and including detached ADUs and JADUs. And so the draft ordinance before you today does have attachments C and D are the updated ones that include detached ADUs and JADUs. So there are two options in today's agenda for the action. You could take the second reading of the ordinance that was passed or that had the first reading on March 2nd, or you can conduct a first reading of the amended ordinance that includes detached ADUs and JADUs. So designated smoking areas, we looked in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. The only city that has a setback from neighboring property is City of Santa Clara, and theirs is 30 feet. And so again, what's existing and what was discussed on March 2nd is designated smoking areas have to be outdoors, 30 feet from areas used by kids or for physical activity, 30 feet from the multi-unit housing, and has perimeter signs and a receptacle for cigarette butts. The amended version includes the stipulation that it be a reasonable distance with, which in our ordinance is 30 feet, in any direction from a non-smoking area, that could be a city park, for example, and/or any operable doorway, window, opening, or other vent into an enclosed area of adjacent private property. We also looked into accessory dwelling units. As we've discussed in the past, other ordinances in Santa Clara County don't include ADUs in their non-smoking ordinances. But we also did look for some other examples in San Bruno, San Mateo, and South San Francisco do include attached ADUs, but still exempt detached ADUs. Albany and Pasadena include all ADUs in their smoke-free ordinances. So in the amended ordinance for this evening, we added multi-unit residence also include single-family homes with an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit, junior accessory dwelling unit, or second unit. And this would then include attached and detached ADUs and JADUs. Here's an example of an attached ADU versus a detached ADU. Again, just as a reminder, this is also in your attachments, but this is kind of how we compare to other cities in Santa Clara County. A lot of cities have, are starting to take up the multi-unit housing, smoke-free issue. And again, as I mentioned, we could have the first reading of the amended ordinance that includes ADU, detached and attached ADUs and JADUs. Or if the council prefers, we can have the second reading of the ordinance that was passed on, or had the first reading on March 2nd. And that concludes my presentation, and we're available for questions.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any questions from council clarifying the presentation material? I don't see hands up, and so I will go over to our members of the public. There are two hands raised, and I'll remind everyone that as long as you have your hand raised by the end of the first public speaker, I will call on you. If you don't have your hand raised by that time, by the time the first public speaker commences and concludes speaking, I will not call you. And so the two hands raised at this point are Jennifer Griffin and Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Oh, hi, Mayor. Yes, I'll speak on this, but I had had my hand up for item 11 for public input, and I think you all skipped that accidentally, so I sent an email to the city clerk. And this one for smoke-free, I think that's important, that ADUs remain smoke-free because of the legislation where potentially they could be four feet from all property lines. And God knows if nine and 10 get passed, we're going to have people living in each other's backyards and doorways. We need to make sure. We need to make sure that these units, if even the ADUs that are built now are smoke-free. Because the smoke will be going four feet. You can have smoke go over walls, through walls. Even if people go outside, there is no room between the ADUs and the adjacent neighbors. So children who are playing in the backyards or alleyways of adjacent properties will wind up getting secondhand smoke. We have to be firm with this because, yes, it may be an invasion to people's privacies, but everyone, just because you live in an ADU does not mean that you can get away with smoking. I'm sorry, that's, or a JADU. This is the world we're living in now. And if it applies to homes, businesses, it applies to wherever you are in your backyard. I'm sorry, this is where we're going with this. And if you could address the issue with the public input for number 11, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jennifer. So Jennifer, we did, in fact, call on public input for item 11. I think that it was simply not noticed. Perhaps it was because we got to that point in the agenda relatively quickly. But I did ask for a public input at the point there were no hands raised. And so, you know, unfortunately, there was no one to call on at that time.
I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
Then I'll just say, okay, all right. Let's talk about ADUs now, and we're doing smoking. I am very vehemently opposed to having ADUs in backyards because of the problems with, in, okay, let's go down the road of high-density housing. This is where we're going with the state takeover of Big Brother. If we're going to be having 10 units on each 1,000-square-foot lot, you are going to have people packed in willy-nilly like New York City. You cannot have smoking laws. People have to, it's invading personal privacy, but you cannot have smokers above you, below you, around you, because we will have no space from any of the yards. So yes, it is an invasion of privacy, but that is where we're going. SB 9 and 10 are an invasion of privacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so we will take this back to council. And before we have further discussion, I would like to ask for a motion to be placed on the table. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
Okay, I want to make sure I've got the right one. Okay, I want to have the new ordinance. So, okay, so I move, I move that ordinance number 21-2227, which is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending City Code, Chapter 10.90 of Title 10, Public Peace, Safety, and Morals, to prohibit smoking in multi-unit housing in certain outdoor areas, which add setback requirements for designated smoking areas and includes detached ADUs and JADUs in the regulations, and which includes a finding that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA, be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
Would anyone like to second Councilmember Moore's motion? And I'll go by hands, whoever puts their hand up first. Councilmember Willie?
I'll second. I like that version.
Okay, excellent. Before we go to the city clerk to conduct the first reading and take our roll call vote, I'll go by hands with any commentary or possibly follow-up questions. Councilmember Wei?
Okay, I do appreciate, I don't like smoking. I don't smoke. None of my friends smoke. I do appreciate this ordinance, but I am very concerned that we are including single-family homes with JADU, that they might accommodate their parents, who might be smokers. Or, you know, I get it, if it's condominiums, you know, you have no control of your, who is living beside you, on top of you, or townhomes. But single-family homes, when they rent their ADUs or they give to your relatives to live, they can say they don't want smokers. So I do feel that include, especially JADU, is very strict. I mean, we are prohibiting some things that's, sometimes it's family members. It just, we are asking people to, I just think it's a little bit too strict, and it's kind of invading, like Jennifer said, it's invading people's privacy. And I don't think JADU should be really included. And I actually think detached ADU. I like the original, that ordinance that we have, just detached, just attached ADU, not a JADU, not a detached. Because I feel that people who have single-family homes have control. They, by law, they can say no smokers when they run or rent it out. Okay, so not like you're buying condominium. You don't know whose neighbor you are. So we need to have that ordinance to control a public condominium or townhouse situation. But for single-family homes, they have control. That is my only concern about this ordinance. And I don't know what my fellow councilmembers', you know, thoughts are.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up next.
I agree with Councilmember Wei here that I feel it's a bit invading our property right to regulate smoking or non-smoking ADU and JADU. I think, yes, we want everyone to be healthy. But at the end, everyone still is responsible for their own behavior. And I, but I like the amendment that's about designating smoking area that it should be a reasonable distance away from other non-smoking and smoking area or doorway windows and other property. That part I would like to see in the ordinance. But yeah, I have similar concern about property right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Any other hands? Well, I'll go ahead and speak on it. I support this ordinance. And my family, we have a single-family attached home. And that's already captured in the baseline here. And, you know, the plot is somewhere on the order of 3,000-some-odd square feet, three floors. Our other side of the attachment is virtually completely separate. If someone was smoking in there, we would not be able to be affected by it unless it went through a window and into our window, separate circulatory systems. And so for me, that's very much akin to the ADU regime. And if we're going to be contending with densification of our single-family areas, and we're already in what is legally a single-family residence, requiring this, as I well know, because I live in one of these single-family attached units, I think that it makes not just logical, but legal sense to do what we're doing. You know, I'm not going to make too many comments with regard to, you know, public health. But I think that we have just come from a time where you see a stark difference between outcomes for people that have really healthy cardio-respiratory systems versus ones that are more compromised. And so, you know, my hope is that the trend does go towards preserving our health. And to the extent that, you know, we can do so, I'm in complete agreement with doing so in a reasonable and thoughtful fashion. And I think this is reasonable and thoughtful. I see the points that are being made by Councilmember Wei and Vice Mayor Chow. But I simply think that the overall trend and my own policy positions support the motion on the table. So that's my comment. I don't see any other hands raised. Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised.
I want to make a friendly amendment, see if that's acceptable, if somebody wants to second it. I would like to amend to take the JADU out. Because that is just really, when the JADU is really just for, a lot of people, for their families and, you know, sons and daughters and.
Okay, Councilmember Wei.
That's my friendly amendment.
Very good. So the friendly amendment process is to the movement. And Councilmember Moore moved the item. And then if she accepts the friendly amendment, then we go to Councilmember Willie to see if he accepts it as a second. Councilmember Moore, do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
No. And I think that we really are setting a good example here that we're showing concern for the health of our community, particularly the health of children. And I think, you know, certainly the junior ADU should not be excluded. And we are approaching fire season. So we're going to have an extra load on our lungs coming forward, like we did last year. So again, we have a continuing pandemic. We're going to have the smoke from the fires. And I'm actually kind of surprised that people would want to have that kind of role modeling of smoking around a single-family home and an ADU. I'm just kind of flabbergasted that somebody would want to have that, especially when smoking is so addictive. And, you know, I think there might be, you know, a lack of knowledge about how debilitating lung disease is for a person, emphysema, you know, kids with asthma. We just really need to, you know, set a good precedent and show care for, especially the young people in our community, so that they don't end up with a lifetime of addiction. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Willie.
So I think here, we are not trying to prohibit smoking. We can't. And the way no smoking is not good for people, just like drug use is not good for people. But we can prohibit them on any of the Cupertino homes. Here, what we are trying is to prevent anyone who might suffer from secondhand smoke, where, which they can have no control of. And I think when ADU is part of a house, what if the owner themselves is a smoker? We cannot say you cannot smoke. We don't have that right. And if a smoker homeowner would like to allow their ADU to be rented to another smoker, yeah, it's bad for their health, but it's not our right as government to tell them what you can or cannot do. We are not an authoritarian government. And so I would like to offer a supplemental motion. I will try.
I think you mean a substitute motion.
I'd like a substitute motion. Yeah, I'd like to move a substitute motion along the same line of Councilmember Wei. We take out the JADU. The rest will be the same as proposed.
Okay, is there, let's, Councilmember Willie and Councilmember Moore, I will call on you. But if you put your hands down with regard to the seconding right now, is there a second for Vice Mayor Chow's motion? I'll go by the first hand raised. Councilmember Wei?
I'll second that.
Okay, so now we do have a second substitute motion for, well, that's on the table. Councilmember Willie and Councilmember Moore, you had your hands up for comments. Did you want to speak to the substitute motion at this time? Because that's what's up for discussion. Okay, I don't see your hands raising. So Councilmember Willie, I'll give you the floor here. Councilmember Wei, you did have your hand up. But Councilmember Willie, of course, was instructed to lower his hand for the purposes of the second. So Councilmember Willie, would you like to make a comment on this?
Yeah, so the comment that I would make is, you know, houses are getting, you know, right to the designated setbacks. And 20 years ago, they weren't. And with five-foot setbacks, smoke does travel that far. And, you know, once somebody moves in and the smoke starts propagating over, they're left as, you know, just, that's the way it is. There's nothing they can do. The ability to at least have some regulation over that, that the junior ADUs are going to be small in size as opposed to the principal residence, where people could go and smoke in the garage if they wanted to. A lot of people won't smoke in their house, but they'll go to the garage or something. The ADU isn't going to have that luxury. And so he's going to probably be outside and so close. Well, either way, we're making a big step forward tonight by the secondhand smoke ordinance. And if we do remove the JADU, I'm okay with that at this point in time. I would move forward with it if we have the support. But I would tend to think that it will come back to us. If we don't do it now, it'll come back to us maybe in five years as more and more communities start enacting these. And we'll go ahead and make it a little bit more inclusive. But for now, wherever we have the more support, you know, the most, the secondhand smoking ordinance is going to look very successful tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. So what I'll start doing is applying a one-minute timer. Councilmember Wei, you're followed by Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I really want to make it clear, we don't like smoke. We want to discourage smoke, especially for young people. What I'm really concerned is homeowner's right. If this homeowner is a smoker, he has a JADU to rent. He can make it clear he's a smoker. But this ordinance is going to prohibit him to, for him to rent it to anybody who is a non-smoker. So I just feel that we can take care of ordinance and we encourage non-smoking and we try to help people who cannot help themselves if they have neighbors who buy their homes in condominium. That's what an ordinance is for. And I really believe that we should not infringe too much on the owner's right, like Vice Mayor Chow says. That's the only reason I am advocating for, let the JADU go. And yes, we, nobody, I believe not one of us want people to smoke. We, you know, in the schools, we said, "Don't smoke." And we encourage the young people, "Don't smoke." This is not to encourage people to smoke, or the health issues, everybody knows. It's just that, I just feel that I think we should be a little bit, you know, take care both ways, right? There are people who smoke. It's not our prerogative that you cannot smoke in your own home. So that's the reason why I think so.
Yeah, Councilmember Wei, thank you. Vice Mayor Chow?
Three points. First, today, without this ordinance, any property owner can require that their ADU can only be occupied by non-smokers today. Second, with the ordinance, a homeowner who smokes will be forced to rent the ADU to a non-smoker, who will be subject to the secondhand smoke. That's ridiculous. Third, there is no way to enforce this policy since we can't get into their homes to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Mayor Paul, could you clarify? It's my understanding that if a homeowner chooses to take their single-family residence and make it a multi-unit residence, that this ordinance would require that it would be all non-smoking. Is that correct?
That is correct. The ordinance as exists before the new ordinance is made, so.
Well, the new ordinance would, I asked for the first reading of this new ordinance. So this would require that the entire place, the single-family home plus the junior ADU and the ADU all be non-smoking, correct?
Let me let staff verify this, but my understanding is yes. It would all have to be.
Okay, and then I would like to hear the answer and then call the question.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would include the single-family home and the ADU.
Okay, very good. So.
For the question, I would like to call the question.
Okay, Councilmember Moore has requested that we vote on the substitute motion. And so procedurally, we'll vote on the substitute motion first. Madam City Clerk, if you could please conduct a first reading of the substitute motion and also conduct a roll call vote after that.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 21-2227, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending City Code, Chapter 10.90 of Title 10, Public Peace, Safety, and Morals, to prohibit smoking in multi-unit housing in certain outdoor areas, which adds setback requirements for designated smoking areas and includes detached ADUs and JADUs in the regulations, and which includes a finding that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA.
So Madam City Clerk, there was a modification made to that. And so my understanding is that we are no longer including detached ADUs and JADUs. Is that correct to the movement, to the maker? Is that correct to the movement uh to the maker of the substitute motion? Can we, can we get a clarification on that? Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, since you made the motion, can you clarify whether you are including, or rather, not including the part that states and includes detached ADUs and JADUs in the regulations?
So my motion is to take the JADU out.
Okay, just the JADUs and not the ADUs.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and so Madam City Clerk, it would be your, your first reading, um, but without the words J and JADUs.
Yes, as amended to remove JADUs from the regulations.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
No.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Nay.
The motion fails with uh Wei and Chow voting yes.
Okay, so now we are back to the original motion that was on the table. Um, I, I will go ahead and um ask that we, we vote on this, but we do have Vice Mayor Chow with her hand raised. That being the case, I'll go ahead and reset everyone's timer uh to the minute. Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, I was confused by Councilmember Moore's last question. So with the ordinance now, are we prohibiting anyone in Cupertino to sm- smoke in their own home?
Uh, to clarify, it would just be on the properties that have a JADU or ADU. So. Well, not just, but that's what's under discussion and also includes multi-unit housing.
Only the, okay, let me rephrase. So are we prohibiting anyone who has ADU or JADU to smoke in their own main house?
Correct, it would include them, the single-family home as well.
So if they build an ADU, they cannot smoke in their own house? But if they don't build an ADU, they can still smoke in their own house?
Correct.
Huh.
Okay.
Or it also includes attached single-family homes, but I think we covered that just.
Yeah, that, that's uh your minute, Vice Mayor Chow, and Councilmember Wei.
So I, I do understand the um, yeah, we're doing the right thing because we really don't want to encourage smoking, and I am just still really concerned that um, you know, that means a smoker cannot build an ADU, even whether it's junior, attached, detached. So I just feel that that's a, a little infringe on an owner's right to build an ADU.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Well, uh, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand up.
Yeah, that, I'm, I'm, I'm glad Vice Mayor Chow asked that uh last question. Um, you know, and I think the, the more, the most important item to me though is, so somebody has a house with a JADU and an ADU, and they are renting out the entirety. And to me, that entirety needs to be smoke-free. And so I, I think, you know, that what we've got does it, it does hamper the person that uh would want to rent out his JADU and ADU and still smoke in his house. But I, unfortunately, I, I don't think there's a perfect solution, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. I don't see any other new hands raised, although Councilmember Wei, you have your hand still raised. Was that from not lowering it before?
No, Mayor Chow, I, I actually, I'm a little confused. So i- if the owner wants to rent the whole thing out, you know, single-family plus the ADU, it's non-smoking, we, even with this, uh, with, even without this ordinance, right? It's, it's becau- it's only when they want to live in the house and they want to rent it out, they can't smoke anymore because they have a renter now living in their ADUs. But if they rent the whole house out with the ADUs, that doesn't, that doesn't prohibit them, that, that, that still make it all non-smoking. This, this ordinance, only prohibition is if you live in the house, you have, you're a smoker. If you build an ADU, then you cannot smoke, because you, if you rent this ADU out, it's becomes a sm- a non-smoking facility. That's what I, how I understand it. Sorry, I was a little confused. Is, is that?
Uh, well, a final clarification, uh, Katie, would you like to clarify Councilmember Wei's question?
Sure, um, so the non-smoking requirements would apply to both scenarios, whether it's owner occupied or rented out for the main home. Both ADU and main home would be uh required to be smoke-free under this ordinance.
In, in, in another way of putting it, Katie, um, once you make an ADU or a junior ADU, it becomes a multi-unit dwelling for the purposes of this legislation. Right? Okay, so.
Is that right? Okay, okay, got it.
Okay, great. Uh, so I will go ahead and ask that our city clerk conduct the first reading of the motion on the table, which is uh per the recommended action, and um subsequently conduct the roll-call vote. Thank you.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 21-2227, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending City Code Chapter 10.90 of Title 10 Public Peace, Safety, and Morals to prohibit smoking in multi-unit housing in certain outdoor areas, which adds set, adds setback requirements for designated smoking areas and includes detached ADUs and JADUs in the regulations, and which includes a finding that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Nay.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Nay.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
The motion carries with Wei and Chow voting no.
Okay, we're at 8:10 now. Let us reconvene in five minutes. Would anyone like 10 minutes before we go on to item 14 before item 13?
Five minutes is good.
Five minutes, fine. Okay, we'll see you in five minutes at 8:15. Thanks.